Call this work session to order. This is typically not so formal, but we'll try to keep it informal, having it in the council chambers. The mayor wanted to move it in here for the benefit of all and for transparency and for all of the people to be able to get this information. I said, "That's a good idea. Let's do it." So... First item on tonight's work session will be a discussion of the economic impact of the Fairhope Airport. I'm going to ask Airport Chairman Joe McInerney to come forward and whomever else you want to bring with the Airport Authority, Joe. And I'm going to preface this discussion by addressing some allegations that were made quite falsely this past week. There were allegations of misconduct. There were allegations that there were ethics violations on behalf of the Airport Authority to award a contract to an Airport Authority member. I passed out to the council members a very lengthy opinion from the Ethics Commission, which was gained in February of this year. That was handed down after the applicant hired an independent attorney to write a letter to the Ethics Commission. They paid for that with their own money. It was a very, very lengthy letter. And then it came back, the Ethics Commission came back, and if you can see this, this is four, five, or six, or seven pages with an advisory opinion that was unanimous that there was no conflict of interest. And I don't really appreciate good people being torn down. I think it's ridiculous that good people are trying to be torn down in this. The Airport Authority has done nothing but good for this city, and I, for one, don't appreciate it. So, we need to put that to bed right away. So...
Maybe comments?
This is not public participation, Mr. Rip. Your comments are not appreciated, most especially.
Well, I'll wait until...
Well, you can wait until the council meeting when we have it. That will be fine. Yes, sir. You will have that opportunity.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. McInerney, would you like to give us a rundown on the economic impact of the Fairhope Airport Authority?
I appreciate that, Jack. And I'm Joe McInerney. I'm chairman of Fairhope Airport Authority. Several of my board members, Pam Cradell... Sorry. Several of my board members, Pam Cradell, Chip Broner, Vince Booth are here. I don't see anybody else. But anyway, we're a volunteer board. We're an airport authority chartered into the state of Alabama. And we basically try to promote aviation and economic development in association with the airport. And what I originally came today to do, what I was asked to do, is kind of give a summary to our new council, kind of an overview of what the economic impacts of the airport are. And I've given them a handout, and I'd like to just briefly go through that. I certainly, if any of the council members have questions, we can certainly stop. We can stop and talk about that. But anyway, long story short is that we're basically promoting aviation and economic development around our airport. We've encouraged the relocation of Seeger's, which was a $2.7 million initial investment, $3.5 million of capital investment in the last four years to come there at 110 employees. We've encouraged expansion of Continental Motors, $1.4 million initial investment, and another million is pending that'll come out in 2017. We have 26 employees and soon to be, maybe soon to have an announcement of another 10 employees. We've encouraged the relocation of Continental, of Executive Aviation Group, which has $8.5 million of capital investments and six employees. They're basically an air taxi service that's housed, that basically is based in Fairhope that can fly people with medical emergencies or sicknesses, this is all over the nation with a fleet of jet aircraft. We've encouraged or promoted the construction of three hangars, construction of Cedar Creek, which was a $1.4 million investment. Mid Bay Air for $700,000, it's going to be around $800,000 when we get through with it. We developed a wetland mitigation bank. There's several of those. Some of the airport land that's adjacent to the airport can't be used for anything. And we developed the only wetland mitigation bank south of Montgomery. And we sold wetlands credit and reimbursed, reimbursed, paid off some of the loan that we have. We sell aviation fuel. That's our main source of revenue, or one of our main sources of revenue. We sold 250,000 gallons of jet fuel last year and got a 7% surcharge for the fuel that we sold. And we've gathered construction impact fees on $7.4 million of construction out there. That's the hangars, the aviation academy, all the work that Continental has done to improve their circumstance. Anyway, a lot of, a lot of finance, a lot of aspects. Anyway, most of the guests from the, or 15% to 20% of the guests from the Grand Hotel arrive by General Aviation Airport. The Fairhope Airport Authority is a foreign trade zone, free of taxation. The airport provides the eastern shore, and that's Point Clear and Daphne, access to corporate aviation. People fly in, have meetings at the airport, and then fly out, all in a day's work. I mean, we have, at any one time, we'll have four to five jets on the runway that are basically people coming in to do business in Fairhope or in the eastern shore and basically then leaving after that, after that business is done. We've got 75 acres that we've designated as an advantage site that we're waiting for a new, a new development to come in there. We've actually gone through the process to get that shovel ready. And we also housed an Alabama State Trooper and Forestry Commission hangar out there. On a promotional thing, we and our partner Continental Motors, who is the FBO, we host aviation classics. We host events all the time, maybe one to two a year. Most recently, we had the Air Race Classic, which was a women's flying of about 100, about 60 planes, about 150 women. We had an LBO, LOBO flying in October. And we're hosting the Naseo Conference in September 2018. All these people come and stay in the hotel, fly in, and spend money in our community. And we try to, we try to... Anyway, the challenges facing our airport, or we've got some debt that we assumed when we bought some land around the airport, 251 acres. We've reduced that down to 242 acres, but we've got $7.4 million in debt. I would like to refinance that debt now while interest rates are at an all-time low. It's a floating rate note now. We'd like to fix it, do it on a fixed rate. We've been successful over the last, I guess, over the last four years in attracting FAA grant money. We brought in about $8 million in FAA grant money to the airport. We've got a $3.3 million construction project going on as we speak. And we've got, and we've applied, or will apply in the June timeframe for another $2.5 million from the FAA. We're looking to develop a general aviation terminal at the airport right now. When people fly into our community, what they see is a 1960s venue FBO. We'd like to develop a venue that people are proud of. We've arranged for about $350,000 in capital for that. It'll be about a $700,000 project. And we've recently implemented a marketing plan to try to promote the airport and Fairhope throughout the United States through aviation channels. Jack?
Okay. Any questions for Joe, council, or mayor?
I do have some questions.
Yes?
I agree that the airport is an asset to Fairhope when it's going to be developed in a way that will be an asset for Fairhope. Back in 2007, we purchased land for $8.75 million. And I think we've consolidated some debt also in that. And at the time, I'm not sure why this happened, and maybe it was a good decision at the time. But we put the debt in the airport's name, and then the city has obligated itself to an appropriation in excess of $500,000 a year to pay for that. And although I do see potential in the airport, and I do think that the volunteers that have helped bring the airport to what it is today, I mean, it is amazing what y'all have been able to accomplish. I do think that your goals for the airport and the goals for me as the mayor and having something that benefits all the citizens of Fairhope, they're just two different things. Because this debt represents over 20% of our overall debt, I do have to take this very seriously, and I have to look at it in a way that, you know, really, I feel like the city is going to be in a better position to develop it in such a way that we get this debt off of our books and hopefully pay back about $3 million worth of interest that we have paid since 2007. So, I had sent an email to the airport board, and I thought I had all the emails, but we are going to exercise our... For the contract, if at any time after March 15th, 2012, we can take the land back if the principal wasn't paid back for $10. And I do think this is in the best interest of the citizens of Fairhope. Again, we've been paying for this since 2007, and I think that myself and the fortunate economic developers that I'm wanting to hire will be in a better position to make decisions that will benefit all of our citizens. When you spend money like that every year and we try to privatize our spending in a way that is good for our voters, you know, you have to measure that compared to what we give our five public schools. And of course, we have been giving the airport a lot more than that, and there wasn't a plan. You know, what is the goal? And I think nine years is enough. So, we want to help the airport be the best it can be, but we've got to develop it in a way that's good for Fairhope and its citizens. And that's why I'm going to take the land back, renegotiate the loan, and we will, the rates are low. We definitely want to get that, want a fixed interest rate, since it does the loan in 2020. And those are my thoughts.
Comments, council? Anybody? This is informal.
I had a question about taking that back. I mean, if we take it back, it's still subject to mortgage, the same mortgage as currently on the property. Also, we've got the FAA grant money that's tied up with the actual airport facility and sort of east side. What is required if we take this back? I mean, if we're taking it back, we're taking back a portion because you'd have to repay the grant, right?
I'm not going to change any plans that have been negotiated with FAA to extend that. And had I been brought into the conversation as I wish that I would have from the beginning, I would have explained all that. But no, we, I want the airport, and the city wants an airport that can be, have a positive impact on our economy. And I think this has great potential to do that. But right now, we are not in a position, the city really should have never, we should have never purchased the land to begin with, but we did purchase it. And we put the land in the airport authority's name, and then we just wrote the appropriation every year. If we're going to pay for it, we need to have the land.
I do want to set the record. I mean, the Airport Authority did not go out and say, "We want to buy this land." The city, the mayor brought this and said, "This is what we want you to do."
No, nobody on this table has anything to do with the history, unfortunately, but we do have to look forward now and do what's right for the citizens. And what we want as a city is going to be different than what y'all are working on as an airport. I want the airport to be extremely successful, and y'all have done an amazing job in doing what you can with the voluntary board. I think it's amazing. But because, there is no sense of urgency to get, take care of this debt when it's just always, the city will take care of it. And I feel now it's my responsibility to make sure that it's a top priority, again, since it represents over 20% of our debt.
What are some of the things that we're thinking about doing with the property if we need to take...
Well, for one thing, we're going to have a plan. And do I have that plan right now? No. But there has never been a plan, and we want to make it part of a comprehensive plan. We do have unbelievable talent that we can interview, and we're going to, you know, share that information with y'all. But piecemealing sales for 30% of what we paid for the land is not prudent, and we have to make a comprehensive plan that will not only pay off this huge debt, a debt that the airport cannot pay. I mean, they wouldn't be able to get this approved without the city saying, "We're going to pay that." So, we're just going to take it, and we're going to develop it in a way that we can pay back that, not only the debt that's there, but also recouping the $3 million we've already paid.
And Mayor had a question on, just on the economic development aspect of this. I had spoken with a few economic developers, and they had indicated one reason you would keep it in the Airport Authority's name is that municipalities are now, I guess, handcuffed a little bit as far as what they're able to offer in incentives, and that they may have more of a benefit.
This has nothing to do with the Airport Authority. This is the land.
But they felt that the Airport Authority would be able to offer better incentives to recruit business to the airport.
They can still offer their own incentives. That land has nothing to do with incentives. The land should have never been purchased.
Well, I will argue that point.
Well, I'll take a little bit of exception to that. We have, 51 acres on the east side has allowed us to go out and attract $11 million of FAA money and will allow us to expand the airport to serve the community for the next 50 years.
I'm not trying to be shortsighted. I recognize that an airport like this can be a huge benefit, and it is a benefit to some extent right now. I have to think of our citizens, though. And if you were in my shoes, you would be doing the same. I have to do what is appropriate for the citizens. They're paying for this. Okay? Did y'all hear me?
Yeah.
We don't have microphones on.
We can hear you.
So, what are the pros and cons, I guess, of the city versus the Airport Authority owning that land? What's the advantage of the city? I understand you're saying the city, you want the city to have control of it because the city's paying the note on it.
Right.
But is that going to make it less attractive to people?
No. I'm like scratching my head going, "Did y'all get together and have a conference before this meeting?" I mean, that makes no sense.
No, we didn't have a conference.
But that makes no sense, the questions you're asking. This is the land that was purchased for the airport. It has nothing to do with...
But my point is, if you've got a group of Airport Authority Board that are familiar with aviation and would know what would need to be done to attract certain businesses...
Like I said, they've had nine years to do it. I have to make a decision for the citizens of Fairhope.
I understand, but they had $8 million worth of farmland, and they've had to do the infrastructure improvements to get it to where they could market it.
They've had nine years to do that. For land that should not have been purchased, again, it doesn't have to be...
Honestly, we're not...
But we, you know, even if it was a bad decision or a good decision, regardless, we are here today. We still owe about the same amount of money that we did in 2007, and I'm pretty sure all the voters of Fairhope, if they saw a priority of spending and they saw over $500,000 a year going out every single year as an appropriation to the airport, and then they see, just in the last four years, because we haven't given anybody this rule before this, $300,000, I mean, $300,000 to our five public schools, I can assure you, that's not a priority of spending that the citizens of Fairhope want.
Do we reap any, I mean, do we receive any revenue from the Airport Authority as a city?
No. No, no, no. They are dependent upon the city. Let me kind of give you all some other facts and figures, if I may. We're in the middle, we're at the end of this year, we'd be at about, what, $8 million in improvements if you talk about the investment made, $8 million worth of improvements, not counting the private hangars, which is 1.4...
1.4 and then 800, 2.2 million.
About another 2.1. How much of an investment did Continental make in the building, which is all owned by the Airport Authority?
They own a million, they made a million, two, plus they're going to make another million in 2017.
So, we're at 2 to 10, we're somewhere around $11.5 million in improvements. And yes, the city can continue to go after that, but we, when we assume that note, if we finance that note, 7.45 million for 15 years, and I ran it at 2%, at 2% interest, it's $575,000 a year, $575,297 a year, to be exact. Now, so that's going to be the city's to service.
Regardless if we have the land or not.
Correct.
That's all we're doing. All we're doing is taking the asset.
So, what, if we hinder ourselves to be able to use that land for economic development by taking it back from the Airport Authority, such as was suggested, there's nothing also to prevent the person that may be hired by the city to assist with marketing that land. I don't see, but if they're hindered by the fact that we took it back, which the council needs to approve, and that's one of the problems, that's a contract that has to be broken by the council, and if we purchase that, that is a purchase of real estate property.
It's actually already expired. It's expired, 2012.
Okay. Well, I think that any purchase or any financial grant, any contract that the city enters into whatsoever has to be approved by the council.
I don't know why anybody would not approve something that is in the best interest of the city, and I want what's best for the airport. I want it to be a better impact economically for the citizens and for the city of Fairhope. I want the best things, and I'm not going to hinder anyone by doing this.
Right. I just, I think that if you take Mr. Conyers' comments into account, that it may actually hinder us to take it back. It may be best left with the Airport Authority. Now, if that happens, let me also, is the attorney for the Airport Authority here today? Josh, can I ask you a question? The way I understand it is that of that land that was purchased in 2007, if that reverts back to the city, it's only that part of the airport property which is not permanent property. Some of that becomes fixed assets of the Airport Authority, such as the runway. In other words, the city doesn't get the runway back and the aprons and the taxiways. And that land on the east side, I believe, because it's encumbered by FAA grant money, may become part of that permanent airport property. That's, I have a question.
As I stated before, it has nothing to do with what your plans are. We want to help with that.
I understand.
But we do want to make sure that we bring development industry in quickly so we can retire this tenure debt.
I'm trying, I'm trying to get to my point here. If, is that going to stay with the Airport Authority or that land that's encumbered by the FAA grant money? Would that revert? Could that, for the $10, revert back to the city? And the reason I'm asking the question is this, because if the land that comes back to the city is reduced by those parcels of land, you've got $7.45 million owed on a lot less land to sell to be recovered, which drives the price up to about $53,000, Nathan. If you think it was a bad deal in 2007, it's going to be a really bad deal in 2016, if in fact, that's what occurred.
So, do you feel, Jack, that it's better to leave the land in the airport where there hasn't been a plan and there hasn't been any interest paid, and for us to continue to pay the appropriation?
I think it's almost a wash. I think that we might be tying our own hands if the city takes it back. And I don't say, I don't want to say that that has been expired, and just the last two years alone, $1.5 million worth of debt has been retired. So, just when they're hitting their stride and they're in the midst of a $10 million improvement, there'll be about $8 million into it right now. And I actually, I add that up to, what, closer to $11.5 million, which will ultimately be about $13.5 million. I don't know that we want to upset the apple cart and...
I promise you, this is not upsetting the apple cart. This is doing something that is important to the citizens of Fairhope. We're taking back an asset that we've already been paying for. We want good things for the airport. We're going to work together to accomplish those things. And I can promise you, when you tell this story to citizens, they do scratch their head and wonder, "Why have we been paying it this long? Why hasn't there been a plan? Why hasn't there been accountability?"
Wouldn't it be better to come up with a plan and go to the Airport Authority and say, "This is what the city would like to do"?
They've had since 2007, and I know that, I know that with a comprehensive plan that we're going to be doing and the study with the BP funds that we're going to put in for, we can come up with a plan that is good for everybody, including the Airport Authority.
Yeah, yeah. I like that.
To me, it makes more sense to come up with that plan than approach the Airport Authority. I mean, it's almost like federal government, let's pass it, and then we'll see what's in it. If we are hindering ourselves from getting some of that land back, if the city does buy it back, and we only get part of the land, that doesn't seem like we're... I understand what you're saying. The city's paying for it, and the city should own the land and be in charge of it.
Nobody can answer why the land was put in the airport. Maybe if it was because we had too much debt in 2007?
That was a reason.
Okay. But we're not like that anymore, so why would we not take it now? There's no reason why we should not take the land back.
And Mayor, my question or my comment earlier about economic development, that was, I mean, I have no definitive opinion one way or the other on this. This is something that came up as a sidebar to a conversation I was having about a month ago, to an economic development individual, and they indicated, just talking about the airport, that it would probably be more beneficial to keep it in the Airport Authority's name. I'd be open to asking multiple people in that line of work why that is more specifically, but it was basically due to the incentives, and I, I mean, it was better...
The incentives will not be affected. The FAA that gives the airport money, that money is being used to develop the airport.
I'm talking about incentives for us to recruit, you know, cities there.
But the city can do incentives, too.
Well, it's a lot more difficult for cities to do that than it used to be, and it's easier for something like an Airport Authority to offer an incentive package to recruit private industry. And that was their logic behind it.
Whose logic? I guess you'll just have to give me specifics, because I know that if we bring in something, understand, too, that if land is being piecemealed, sold without a plan, which is what's been happening, and there is not a big plan, the liability is becoming worse and worse for the citizens. It's not like we're saying, "Oh, we're not going to work with you anymore. We're going to work with the airport to make the airport the best it can be." But I have bigger priorities as the mayor of Fairhope to represent the citizens, to get this paid quickly and get the debt off of our books quickly. I mean, do you agree?
I mean, I'm all for debt reduction, absolutely.
Okay.
I would kind of second what Robert's saying. Let's get a plan. Let's get an economic developer and say, "Hey, is this in our best interest to take it back?" And if they say yes, then let's take it back and recommence it.
It is in the best interest to take it back, and you can vote on it if you want, but I can promise you, I've already talked to a lot of people over the last two and a half months, and it's a huge question mark on why the land that we are paying for is still in the Airport Authority's name. Nobody can answer that. I mean, can you? I mean, anybody on this panel, can anybody answer why the land is in the airport's name?
Well, I mean, the original reason was that the city, when we bought it, did not have the constitutional debt authority to, you know...
I said that, but we're not in that situation anymore, so I said, "Why would we, why would it be now?"
And the debt, the debt surface is $428,000, not $500,000.
We've paid over $500,000 in the past.
You're, that's not right. That's $428,000.
Well, the financials that you gave me were wrong, because it was over $500. But regardless, it's still more than we paid the five public schools.
It's a lot of money. It's a lot of money.
But what I'm saying is, we're not in that situation now, Joe. We can take the land back, pay for it, and come up with a plan. What is wrong with the city coming up with a plan for the airport? Why is everybody so against leaving, I mean, taking the land back? I just don't get it. Is it just because you want to disagree with me? I mean, it doesn't make sense.
My point is, there's a lot of talented people around Fairhope. We've all talked about tapping into those talented people that have great resources.
Right. I definitely intend on doing that, for sure.
So, we've got an Airport Authority Board. They know a lot more about planes and jet fuel and FBOs than I do, so why do I want to hire somebody, take on the responsibility of trying to recruit somebody? If we've got a group of professionals...
We're, I'm not recruiting, I'm not sure what you mean. This is just for the, we're not talking about the land that the FAA, that they're getting money for. This is just to build the part of the land to bring in industry. Because like I said, if you're taking a small piece of land and selling it for a third of what you purchased it for, that's not a good plan. I'm just, I have to base these decisions on the past.
What are you basing the...
Has everything been sold?
A third, what do you...
What do you base a third of what you paid for?
Yeah. We paid over $35,000 an acre.
Right. And then we sold the nine acres for what?
I thought it was like $29,000 an acre.
Close to that, yeah. Bought it at the...
I mean, you... I mean, you, we've made more than one sale.
No, we've only had one sale. We, the other part, we put in a wetlands mitigation bank. We had one sale to high grade for 9.7 acres. The other part, we, we basically was stream, bottom end streams, that we put in a wetlands mitigation bank.
Well, I, I guess what we can do from here, just so we're not stuck, is we will, why don't you just start ask, asking citizens?
I got it.
That's the best thing. I mean, don't you think?
Joe, can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
All right. So, let me ask you this. If you took an appropriation from the city, say, over seven years, let's say you refinanced this, and you got a guarantee from the city. And you and I talked about this, so this is, you know, we, we've discussed this before, before we disclose that. We had talked about if you went seven years, you'd get a, an annual appropriation of 300, 300, 300, 275, 275, 250, and 250, and around, and it could be something thereabouts. That would be over seven years, 1.95 million. Now, if the city refinanced it for 15 years at 2% over the same seven years, they would pay 4.03. Granted, we could still have the person that would market this for the city trying to pay off this debt at the same time, and hopefully it'd be paid off. But if not, what do you think the chances of the airport authority, first of all, could you live with that amount of money? And second of all, at the end of seven years, where do you think you would be?
Well, I mean, the conversation we've had, we, we're, we've been promised by the FAA $160,000 going forward for land reimbursement cost. That's something, so that's, that's about, that's about-
That can go towards the loan.
That, that can go to the loan, to about a million and a half dollars. And so, we, you know, we feel like in the next five years, we'll recoup that.
That won't change putting the land in the city's, city's name.
But the other part of that is, is I think that realistically, we did lose three or four years because of the great recession. I think right now, we're coming out of that. We have some momentum. My sense of it is that we'll have a better chance to sell land to a second tier or third tier Airbus supplier in the next three to four years than we'll ever have in the future. And I'd like to, you know, that would be the opportunity I'd like. So, to answer Jack's question-
I'm not going to prevent anybody at the airport coming forward and saying, this is a great plan. I, I want that to happen. I'm saying that the city needs to be a bigger part of it, and the city needs to take back the land because we've been paying for it, and it, it is our land. It's, it's not like there, the airport authority is separate, but we've had this conversation for a long time, Jack and Joe, and I still have not heard of a logical reason why we would not do that, because that land is not going to affect anything the airport does. The land will still stay there for the FAA money that you already have planned. It's not going to touch that. To me, this is what any CEO of a company would do if they had a huge debt that ma, made up over 20% of the whole city's debt, and it's unsecured. I mean, we're just going to take the land back. I don't understand why this is such a big deal to everybody up here.
I think, Deb, that the cost is going to be the same. Like you said, I ran the numbers, 575,000. That's not reducing the debt.
I mean, honestly, I don't know what else I can say.
It's not reducing the, our, it's not reducing the amount of debt that we have when it gets to take it away from the authority. But like you said, it may or may not. I think it's worth exploring. That's why we have these work sessions. It's worth exploring. Does it hinder our ability to market that land? And that would be one argument against-
It's, it's not going to hinder it whatsoever. I mean, I don't even know, like I said before, my personal opinion, we should have never purchased the property to begin with.
I wouldn't argue that.
Okay. So, if we didn't own it to begin with, and you, you couldn't mark, you, you have an airport there already. The land is there. You can bring in people. Wouldn't matter if the city owned it, or if the airport owned it. But at least with, I think the city is at a better position to go out and market this, especially when I'm bringing in an economic development person. They can work with Lee Lawson, and we can work with the county, too. She has, you know, funding availability. I just think we're making it into a plan rather than kicking the can down the road. That's, that's all I'm doing.
Any comments, counsel?
Lee, I see you standing in the back of the room. Do you have any input as to whether it makes a difference one way or another from-
Come, come ahead, dear.
Hate to put you on the spot.
No pressure, Lee. Just come and join us.
You want to introduce yourself?
Yeah, I'm Michael Ryan. My name's Lee Lawson, President of Baldwin County Economic Development Alliance. I'm not going to weigh in on who should own the land and who should not. That's, I think that's for attorneys to decide. I think that's for you and the airport authority to decide jointly as joint bodies, and that's not, the Economic Development Alliance is not going to take a position of who owns the land. I've talked to several of you, including the mayor, and, and several of you who sought my opinion over the last few weeks on this. I'll tell you, like I've told everybody else, we will continue to help whoever retains title to the land, market it and recruit for it, like we have the past several years. And we've taken many a prospect by the airport, and just like I told the airport authority at their last meeting, 80-plus percent of the airspace prospects that we have had in Baldwin County, including suppliers, including maintenance, repair, and other facilities, are looking for existing space. And while we've, we've talked with developers, and we've talked with folks who can bring that existing space to bear, we have not been able to get, get, successfully achieve that. And so, with that, we've been showing a lot of greenfield opportunities, and they've just been fewer and far between, harder to get done, especially coming out of the recession, the years that we, that were already mentioned. What I will say is this, that we, we will work with whomever owns title to the land. I don't see it as an ownership perspective. I will say that authorities, and I've worked for an authority before, were created so that, A, you could place specific financing for certain reasons. You could hold title to land that cities and municipal governments wouldn't have to hold. And honestly, from that perspective, you know, it, it doesn't ma, it doesn't matter from that perspective of who owns it, who's going to market it. We're going to continue to market it, work with all of you, including the authority, because the authority's going to still retain some land that's been approved by the FAA. That fact's not going to change. I, you know, Joe and I've talked about this. I've talked with all of you about this. Your airport is getting to a point where a full-time manager makes sense. I mean, you look at Gulf Shores and what they have. They have an airport authority. They have a full-time executive director that interfaces with that authority. Authorities and industrial development boards were created, A, for a legal purpose, but B, too, to take politics out of decisions that are made on behalf of economic development. Because honestly, if we're, if we're showing an aerospace company that, the Fairhope Airport, and we're talking about planes being flown in, the number one complaint you're going to get is noise and traffic. That's the number one complaint you're going to get from citizens out of the airport who've never flown in and out of our airport in Fairhope.
Right.
That's going to, that's going to prejudice a decision of this body and you to want to sell land to new jobs being created, honestly.
It's not going to-
You, you, just like you want to weigh the, the citizens' decisions, which all of you should, because that's who elected you, you will then have to weigh jobs and capital investment in your community versus citizens' opinion, which you should.
Absolutely.
Which you should. Absolutely. That is why authorities were created, because, because what was happening in economic development is because a mayor or a certain city council person didn't like a certain deal or a company, then they could turn a deal and, and turn away jobs from their community if they were anti-growth or anti-business. So, that's another reason authorities were given that legal jurisdiction over airport authorities, industrial development boards, and industrial development authorities, and specialty financing, specifically. A lot of the, the enabling legislation for these types of bodies were created when special financing was granted only for those bodies to tap into. So, as President of the Economic Development Alliance, we're going to continue to market the airport as we market every piece of property in Baldwin County. And I can tell you, we've worked with Joe and his great committee, and we, we've taken numerous companies by the airport, and we've been successful in bringing companies to the airport. And these, these folks are volunteer board members. I mean, they deserve a hand. I mean, these folks are business people in our community that take a lot of time out of their schedule to meet with us, sometimes on weekends, sometimes at night. I mean, it, it's, it's all hours. So, the airport authority does have a lot of momentum right now. They've done a great job, and we're going to help you market this property because we do see the momentum. And we are for marketing this property and getting developers interested in it, because it's going to take real space on the ground, not just dirt out there. It's going to take space on the ground for us to achieve some of these successes and these wins. So, that's, that's my opinion. I'm not going to sit here definitively and tell you which way to go that's, that, oh, I'm a citizen of Fairhope. That's not my job as President of the Economic Development Alliance to tell you which direction you should go. I can tell you, we've had great success and a lot of opportunities look at the airport over the last couple of years, and we're going to continue to do that, no matter who has title to the land.
So, it sounds to me like you're saying you've been talking and marketing this. There is a plan going on. There's a plan. You've been marketing this airport. You've been bringing companies by there. We've had $10 to $12 million worth of improvements made on a piece of property that, yeah, there's still a lot of debt on, but the, but the value of it itself has gone up tremendously. So, I know that we also have a plaque for the property on the west side. There's a, there's a plan for that. Hasn't been, hasn't been marketed very well. It definitely needs improvement, not, no question. But anyway.
Industrial, industrial development is a, is a, is a long, methodical process. It just is. And yes, times have changed since you purchased, since the city purchased that dirt. The land values have changed. And other parts of our community have invested in economic development and have put land in public hands, in other authorities' hands. So, there's competition out there in the marketplace. And so, you know, what I can say to that is I think the airport's positioned uniquely in being that it's air, adjacent, you know, industrial development land for the airport. And you've, you've kind of grown into your skin as an airport. You know, we're starting to see some hangar development, potential second FBO out there. That's all that's going to help fuel the, the momentum. There has been a marketing plan in place, and we have been successful at bringing opportunities to look at the airport. That's what we're charged with. And, you know, I think every industrial development in this county deserves a plan to have for their, you know, to, to say, hey, this is what's going to go here, and this is what's not going to go here, for sure. And I think as the, as the airport has evolved, so have the plans, and so have the notions. So, we continue to have a strong marketing plan, aerospace and aviation, and, you know, that's been our goal from, from our standpoint. And those are the types of companies we've brought to the airport, including Seeger's and others over the past. And those are the kind that are going to continue to look at the airport. A straight industrial company's going to look at other industrial land in other places. The airport gives its edge to aviation and aerospace.
Lee was instrumental in bringing Seeger's, which is $6.1 million in capital investment, and about 130 jobs in 2008 to Fairhope.
And they started with about 60. So, I mean, you can see where the, the return on investment is by bringing in aviation, aerospace companies. Long history, just like we've worked with UTC and Foley, and now up over 1,000 employees. And it's a high-paying industry. It's a sustainable industry, and it's one that we think is, is one to, to put some stock in our future in, just like some of the white collar companies that we've assisted with, too, that I think this community really sets up well for. And like I said, we're going to, we're going to continue to work and market our community, no matter who holds title to the land.
And like I said from the beginning, nothing about this decision affects us moving forward. This is not the city against the airport, or the airport against the city. It's us working together and having a common goal to make the airport the best that it can be. I believe when we refinance this loan, the city should be put in a better position. If I'm going to be responsible for paying a debt, I absolutely want to be responsible in a big part identifying the best refinancing options and the best plan for the, the airport.
Let me ask a, a question real quick. And I don't want to be into this. Jenny, you might know. And if not, we can look into it. Would, would it matter as far as us refinancing this loan? Would it, would it be better for it to be refinanced under the airport authority's name or the city's name? Would that-
The airport can't do it.
I think as long as the city's guaranteeing the debt, it would be the same. And really, my only logic for keeping it in the airport authority would be if the airport authority could offer incentives that the city can't. And I, is that something that-
No.
No, I mean, not, not that the city cannot. I can tell you that from a-
I can offer a lot of incentives with BP money.
From a business standpoint, you're going to have to do more in, in open meetings as far as negotiating contracts and all that. And, you know, from that perspective, that, like I said, it, it doesn't matter who owns title to the land. It, what matters is that, you know, we're going to continue to market the aerospace and aviation companies. They're going to continue to come and look, but we are in the process of bringing vertical space to fruition out there. And the people we're talking to want to know who the clear, who the clear communication path is with. And that's something that you're, you as a body are going to have to, to determine. We can't come, we can't come talk to 10 people. We can't. We have to ha, we have to have a, a point person, as, as we do at every city that we deal with in Baldwin County. And, and so, that, that's going to have to be clear, no matter who owns title to the land, is who will be running point for, for the airport.
Jay, I think to answer your question is, yes, the airport authority can refinance the debt, but not without some type of guarantee from the city. So, yes, it can be refinanced in the airport authority's name. Is that correct?
Yes, that's, that's correct.
But it wouldn't affect the terms that we receive regardless of these terms?
Well, the way it is now, it's based on year-to-year appropriation. And if it was a longer-term guarantee, you would get a more favorable rate.
The, the city possibly has more opportunity to get a better deal, and I would leave Deborah up to negotiating that, because that's what she does.
Any other economic development or marketing the airport questions?
You're dismissed. I'm just kidding.
I do want to say one thing real quick, Jack, before, before I leave, because we have, we've worked with previous authorities here at the airport, and these guys, like I said, they're volunteers. And a lot of them know the aviation. They know aerospace. A lot of them own their own plane. They know the business. And so, the one recommendation I would have is lean on them for guidance as you plan around FAA, because the FAA's put a lot of trust in this authority. They've put a lot of money into the authority in this airport. And I can tell you, there's a lot of competition for FAA dollars. And that's been what's helped this airport, Gulf Shores Airport, get to the point where they are, FAA grants. And we have to be mindful of that moving forward, because they, they help fund infrastructure that then helps economic development piggyback on that. So, thank you. Appreciate the partnership we have with the city, and look forward to working with you to this.
Thank you, Lee.
Thank you.
So, counsel, we're going to have to move on to the next item, but I just want to let you know that, you know, interest rates are probably going to rise very soon, so we're going to have to make a decision on this very, very soon. I apologize for breaking up a lot of this meeting time. We'll move it, we'll just work right through the agenda meeting on this work session agenda, but you're going to be asked to make a, a decision on that very soon. All right. A discussion of, thank you, Joe. And Josh, you never got a chance to answer that question on the COVID.
You answered, you answered it in the asking of it, which is exactly correct. I mean, the bulk of the property will stay with the airport authority, and the property that is out to the side, which was part of what I call the McGowan purchase, because that's who it was purchased from, would potentially go back to the city, is based on what has been discussed. But the airport authority would still have what, what I call the airport proper, and then be responsible for managing that.
Well, but back to that part that's been improved with FAA money, would that become part of airport proper, or does that stay with the so-called McGowan property?
I don't, well, as, as a matter of title, it, it's still part of the McGowan property, but you have a situation where you have a brand-new taxiway, new aprons, new hangar space that's integrated into the airport, but that is not owned by the airport authority. And I don't, you know, I got the email at 2:00 regarding this issue, so I haven't had a chance to look at the grant assurances and the grant applications that we submitted, but we are bound by those, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Joe. Okay, counsel. Next item is discussion of job positions. Operations Director and Economic and Community Development Director. Those are two different positions. We had asked the mayor at the last meeting to give us a job description specifically for the Operations Director, and you should have all of that in hand. Along with that, I think that the mayor has expressed the desire to create the position of an Economic Community Development Director, and for the council to fund that position. So, with that, Mayor, I would give you the opportunity to- to fund that position. So with that, mayor, I would give you the opportunity to speak to those two positions.
Okay. I'm creating these two positions. I mean, typically, when a new mayor comes in, they bring their own team with them. And I didn't want to do that. I want to be able to use the city employees that we have. I think they're great. And I want to be able to find out what each and every one of their talents are so we can place them in the perfect, you know, situation with the city. We're going to have so much opportunity in a department that is concentrating on economic development, community development, and that includes tourism, that we'll end up probably hiring more people. So we'll be bringing more jobs into the city. But in order for me to do this in a way that I will have help identifying the best talent, instead of replacing department heads, which is what I discussed with all of y'all individually, I don't want to do that. I want to bring two people in that can take over, you know, basically two areas of the city. One will, both income streams for utilities. And of course, that'll be kind of like a utility director, but also in different parts of Public Works, because Public Works is very extensive. And we want to streamline that. And the person that I want to bring in for economic development and community development is because that's what the citizens voted me in for. We need responsible growth. And that's the most important issue on the voters' minds. It is what I have identified as the number one thing that has to happen immediately. And this person with her contacts, she has a lot of national funding. She has worked with nonprofits. But the job itself is going to have a plan, a plan that has never been in place before in the history of Fairhope. And it's going to be good. And it's going to have goals. We will know where we are, where we're going in a year, where we're going in five years. Because right now, we've just been kind of a ship at sea with no lighthouse. And we do need a plan. And that's what the economic and community development person would be. And the person that would be over the utilities is going to be taking that huge profit center and making it even better, but also getting to the bottom of the, all of the utilities and figuring out what infrastructure we need. Because there's things that have not been invested in. And our citizens do deserve the best quality of life. So the job descriptions are there. We did Pandora's here, I think. And she pulled like municipalities for these job descriptions. And I think every month that goes by, we will end up making money and saving money. To try to put detail to that right now is premature because I am right now one person. Y'all are five, and you come, you know, here every other week. I have been working diligently to put all of these things together and showed you the organizational chart. It's something that I spent two and a half months on. And I believe these people will be crucial in helping us identify ways that we can streamline, keep everyone that we have, and we all win. The alternative is that I would have to replace people. And I'll have to leave that to you.
Council members, questions to the mayor, comments, or discussion among ourselves, anywhere you like it.
The first question, this is for you. Do these jobs, if we created these positions, do these jobs have to be posted? What's the protocol?
They will be posted.
So we'll have to post them? How long do they have to be posted for?
I can't tell you off the top of my head.
I think it's three days.
The minimum is three days.
So we post it for three days?
We do have to post the position.
Do we, I mean, do we have to conduct interviews based on the resumes?
That is our normal procedure. We do receive applications in whichever department is responsible for the interviews. There isn't any possibility.
What about for positions that don't exist? There's no department that's...
It's the same process, possibly.
Who does the interviews?
It depends on the department that they're for. Like, if it was going to be for Public Works, and we created a position to add to the compensation study, which is what the procedure is for tonight, we still go through the same process where we post the position, that department had, we received the application, and then that department did...
Interviews, you know, the most likely candidates.
And this range, I mean, this is a, looking at both, the ranges for both positions is 114 through 183.
I went through the AAPPA, which is an organization through the lead municipalities. It's all the HR directors throughout the state. And a lot of times, we bounce questions off of each other all the time, whether it be, you know, how do you pay this person? Or do you have a job description for this? And that's where I got my details for it. There was over twenty different municipalities I've spoken to.
My understanding is, and I'm, thank you, Pandora. My understanding is that we've talked to some people about these positions. So this range, I mean, if we've talked to people about it, if we had specific conversations about what exactly they'd be getting, and it just falls in this range somewhere?
Yes. And again...
That's not something I'd want to, I don't think that's not our policies to talk about specifically.
All you're doing here is voting on creating this job.
But part of that creation, in my mind, would be what that person's...
The study is what Bear and Dora does, based on like municipalities. And we really can't put a price on infrastructure needs and responsible growth. It's the two key things that the citizens voted us in for.
Well, to take a, to quote you, mayor, you know, the citizens, this is the citizens' money. I mean, I think...
Absolutely. And I'm going to put it to good use.
For us to know, I mean, 114 to 180 is a significant difference to know exactly where...
It is a huge range. But that's not, you know, it also depends on experience. But this is also, like I said, streamlining. Streamlining, it's also bringing in an engineer. And right now, we pay, I meant to get the total on that, but we contract out, we don't have an engineer on staff. So we do contract every bit of that labor. And I'm not being paid for the superintendent of utilities, so that can go towards it. And, you know, I'm telling you, it will actually save money at the very beginning with these hires.
The Operations Director, and I just got these about noon today, so I haven't had a full time to read the job description.
I have no idea. We had the job descriptions long before that ready.
So Operations Director, which is going to be basically the utility superintendent plus some other supervisor roles. And that, the salary could come from the current supervisor position, well as some other positions possibly. But the economic and community development, that is a totally new position. And like Jay was saying, the pay range, without having a budget or something, you know, I like plans and having something instead of passing two positions that could be 300,000 or more. I like to see plans.
Well, I did give y'all a strategic plan before we took office. And in this strategic plan was my platform, which was bringing in responsible growth. And I believe that we do have to have the right people in place to accomplish this. And I need to hire those people so they can help me accomplish that goal. I want to take the full advantage of the next four years and make this happen for our city. And to me, the net difference, not that the salary should really matter as far as me hiring, especially a new department, and bringing the salary as a net neutral, you know, but it is net neutral. And then when you take the fact that I'm not taking the superintendent's salary, Gillespie just retired, but his salary was in there, you actually are saving a lot of money when you count the retirements happening by the end of the year. So again, you wouldn't have to do...
That's for that one position, right?
No, this is for all of the, everything. Operation, economic development, and planning.
Where is planning falling to here?
It doesn't have to because it's already created.
Okay. Would one of these two positions be, it looks from my reading of job description, like the Economic Director would have some planning responsibilities?
The planning is in the future, the vision. And the person that I want to bring in is a person that has helped rebuild cities after hurricanes. She has access to funding. She lived here for a long time. I mean, you know her. And she's just a very dynamic, very smart person. But the job descriptions, I'm not sure if everybody had access to the job descriptions. But I mean, it's a very dynamic person that we would be bringing in.
Mayor, a question that I have specifically for the Economic and Community Development Director. When I looked at your organizational chart, there was an assistance position there as well. So is that another position that is going to have to be created?
No. That's from the department. She's already there. And right now, since that's something that Heather would probably work into, it's splitting.
Okay. So that position doesn't...
It's not even something that has to be there. That organizational chart that I gave you is not something that's going to happen tomorrow. It's a vision over time.
Well, I'm only thinking about it for budgeting purposes, whether we would have to budget another position for that. And to follow up with that is, what type of budget do you see going to this department? So...
To what department?
Economic and Community Development Director. Do you see...
Right now...
Are we going to have to give them a budget to spend for their activities?
It's going to be, under that department, we have a lot that's already there. Really, the person that we're bringing in for the economic development is just her salary for now. And as it grows and as we have needs, then we will add to that. But it will be in a way that when we're adding these positions and opportunities for, you know, people in Fairhope, that it will be more than paying for it. I mean, we're not spending one dollar right now on tourism and true economic development. So you invest a little bit, and you'll start...
Well, I know what my question was. And, you know, if we looked at a $150,000 salary, and then I'm wondering if we had to have an assistant at whatever that salary...
The assistant is not...
If you were proposing in your budget, you know, whether you had 50,000 or 100,000, and you're saying right now, there's no plans to add your money to the budget.
Like I said, for the budget right now, as it stands, and what you're voting on tonight is a savings. Because of retirements, because of what I just told you. I mean, it's basically almost net. And Pandora helped me with this because she knows who's retiring. And these are retirees that will not be replaced. So like I said, we wouldn't vote on these positions just so I could make them net neutral. I hope y'all understand that. We're voting on these positions because this is what our citizens want. They want responsible growth. And these are the people I'm bringing in to help achieve that.
I just think we're asking because of, you know, we've never had people in the city that made this kind of money before. And I think that, you know, it's our duty to ask the question of what other might be budgeted. Because we haven't seen a budget. We've talked for an hour about the airport authority, which if we assume that debt is going to add...
We already have the debt.
Five to 600.
But we already have that debt. But what I was, but what I was going to say about the payroll, we're spending, not having a plan and not having responsible growth is costing us way more than these salaries. I hope y'all understand that. In fact, we've been hemorrhaging because of it. So I don't think y'all really, you know, it's not apples and apples.
How have we been hemorrhaging because of it?
Every pending lawsuit that we have right now is due to planning. All of our big ones.
But neither one of these two people are city planners.
I know. The one for economic development is going to be over planning because it's a lot more to that job, if you'll look at the job description. And...
I mean, I saw that. That's why I asked you about, would this person be over...
Right. Because what you do is, we're going to, the whole goal is to organize every neighborhood, bring in experts in each field to do charrettes in every neighborhood and every corner of Fairhope, including outside of Fairhope. Because that is where we need to engage the most. We show them a vision. It will be part of something that they want to do. And we will show them the benefits of coming into the city because we all care about how we grow, even if you're not in the city. We care about Fairhope, keeping its character, keeping what we have that's special. And the only way that we can do that is by coming up with a plan that includes everybody. And I need people to help me do that. And like I said, the person that's going to be over utilities, that's, again, you know, helping us with the infrastructure needs and helping us run it as a business for a profit. I think we can agree that's good.
I'll be honest with you. I mean, I see, I see a lot easier the Operations Director set up and how, I mean, I know that we currently don't have a Utilities Director.
The Utilities Directors was a figurehead.
But I'm saying that salary is no longer being used.
Right.
And we did have a superintendent that was, that retired and was not replaced. I see...
He wasn't over utilities.
But it just, that salary was, is there now. And then if we do that...
But this is not just about how can we pay for this. You pay for it because when you're running a business more efficiently and more profitably, it pays for itself tenfold.
Well, I get that. But as someone that was elected to be responsible for the citizens' money, I feel like I have an obligation to ask these questions. And I'm not putting you on the spot, but I think, I mean, I think I'd be not doing my job if I didn't ask some of these questions.
Like I said, bringing in somebody that understands, right now, we don't have anything in place for the future. We've only been managing this city on a year-to-year basis. Our budget becomes an annual event. And we all come in and we hope and pray, did I get what I want for my department? I mean, I promise you, things are going to be better. But we do have to bring in certain people to help achieve this. Now, like I said, we have a lot of supervisors. And I could have come in and said, thank you for your service, supervisors. I'm bringing in my own team. Thank you. But I don't want to do that. And I would hope that y'all don't want me to do that.
Absolutely.
I mean, supervisors, do you want me to do that? I don't think so. So what I'm trying to do is bring in two people that I feel confident will help me streamline things so everybody has a place. And we're using their gifts. I want to utilize every employee that we have now and hire more. That is my goal because we are going to grow the Economic Development Department, which... That is my goal because we are going to grow the economic development department, which will be a very engaged department with community development, tourism, public relations. I mean, it's, it's going to be a very dynamic arm of the government that we currently do not have.
Any other questions, council?
Jimmy?
Nope.
Jay, any more questions? Okay, that will be an agenda item. Mayor, I would like to say that, I think that was very well said. You know, it, it's hard when you, when you're trying to affect change. And, and the change is not always easy. But you just forgive the council when they ask a lot of difficult questions because as you alluded to, the fact that you've been elected to do it then, it is, you know, it really is our responsibility to ask all of these questions.
Absolutely.
It's the responsibility of us to ask all these and fully vet these positions because, and as you said, there are, there are cost benefits that, that aren't seen on here. You know, there's not a benefit to necessarily that when you hire this person, it's hard to imagine that spending this much money saves money. But, but I hear what you're saying, okay? I hear what you're saying. It just, you know-
Well, I mean, I, I do want to point out that this was not our first conversation either. I, that's why I wanted to meet with everybody individually to make sure that I was explaining the vision and the ultimate goal. Because the organizational chart that you're referring to is not gonna happen for a while. You know, I mean, that's, that is what I see as the, something that the, the city will need to be more streamlined and simplified. I mean, we, it's, it's gonna be better for the city.
Let me ask you one more question about this, and this is, this is kind of one of the sensitive questions that alludes to compensation. You know, it's, it's, it's very difficult to discuss this in a public forum when you're talking about somebody's livelihood. But are there any other terms of payment that would be included for these positions? Obviously, as a city employee, they would get, you know-
Well, the operation director will be, have a car. Not a new car, it'll be one we already have.
That is, that is something that the council has to put, I believe, in there. Maybe, you know, council, if you want to grant that, that has to be, because that's part of the compensation package, has to be included in when you resolution might correct with that. But Pandora, can you answer that question? The, we're just talking about compensation and the fact that if it's the mayor's intention to give this person a vehicle, I believe that's part of total compensation, part of benefits you have to be, that has to be voted upon. I mean, all vehicles are personal property, are city property.
Honestly, I'm not exactly sure how that works. I'm too, because a lot of our department heads use city vehicles. If there's a supervisor on call, I know they take it home, but I don't-
I'm not sure that's always been done right. According to all my education by the league, that all vehicles are property and have to be decided on like any other piece of property in cities. So I'm not saying that they don't, I'm just saying that if, if, if this is voted on, I want to make certain that, that you get what you think you're getting, and we don't have to come back and redo something. That's all I'm saying. So, council, I think that it's wise to take that into account.
It's, it's the same, the position we've had in the past had a vehicle, and we're not buying another vehicle.
True, but this is a totally new, I mean, let's, let's just say, I mean, this is not-
Right. It, it will be a lot more responsible.
General supervisor James had, is a totally new position. And I'm not even certain that James' job description had that he got a vehicle, you know, equal.
He had a vehicle, but-
I know, no, I know he had it. But I don't know the job description said that he was supposed to get one. But, but we all know he was given one. And I would rather just do it correctly than have any question about it. That's all I'm saying. Okay, council, if there's no more questions, do you have any more questions? All right, any final comments on that, Mayor? We're gonna move to this last work session, agenda item that I rushed onto the agenda because the people that are interested are very much in a hurry to push this forward. I didn't know if we would get to it. We're, we're 20 minutes past time, but we're gonna go ahead and discuss this. We can, you know, agenda meetings are just that, talk about the agenda. We'll talk about that in, in the council meeting. So, council, the HUD grant discussion, and Jonathan, are you here?
Right.
You wanna, why don't you come up here to the table?
Sure.
I will, I will try to give a, a quick overview to this. This HUD grant is called, it's an entitlement grant. I don't know that it's a CDBG grant that was discussed. And, and don't let that have a negative connotation. What this is, is to help the lower-income forces of the town receive monies, what is the, for the, like 60,000 approximately?
Around 60,000 dollars a year.
About, yeah, about 60,000 dollars a year. So, the history is about, what, a year and a half ago, the council contracted, when I say the council, that's the city, contracted with SARCP, which is the South Alabama Regional Planning Commission, to put in an application for this grant money. Be honest with you, I don't know where that went, but it came up with concern citizens in the last several months that apparently that application didn't get very far. And we were told that we couldn't get the username and password to get into the HUD system to get the application put in. And I'll just be honest with you, that kind of sounds a little funny because we all lose passwords and usernames, and we call IT and we seem to get usernames and passwords, and, and they give it to us and we move on. But be that as it may, we were told that they could not get into the system to apply. So this was brought to our attention. The mayor and I, and Jonathan, and several members of the community that are affected by this met just last week to discuss this. And the mayor, in fact, signed the HUD application and said that we should move in a different direction to push this forward. What that would entail would be to, as the mayor visions, it would be to remove SARCP from the process. And I believe, Mayor, you have somebody else that we can insert in that process. So the reason that this is on the work session for discussion is to, first of all, let the council know what's transpired briefly. If, if that contract is broken with SARCP, you will be tasked with breaking that contract and then agreeing to whatever the path forward is. So we kind of want to know what that path forward would be. So just kind of lay out my concerns is, is that path forward going to slow things down? Does that-
Are you asking me? Are you asking me?
I was just gonna throw some questions out there.
Oh, yeah, I can, I have-
You know, does that slow the process down? Are we taking a step back by replacing SARCP? Are there additional monies that we're going to have to budget for this? Are there any strings attached to this money that, are there any landmines out there that maybe we should be made aware of? So I'll just, I'll let either one of y'all address that.
Basically, this was a grant, I think it was, it's been two years now, that we contracted SARCP to do the study. And yes, they did come up with some things that, for some reason, they weren't able to do it. And meanwhile, the people that are being affected, their property is being flooded and they're incurring damages. And I brought in, you know, the person that, that I want to hire also. And it just really, and I think you agree, Jack, that there really is no excuse for, for not moving forward in two years.
You know, I'd like to determine that we might want to go a different direction.
Right. I mean, it's, that's not really a-
There's, it's questionable how, how that-
But we're not breaking, we're not breaking a contract.
The contract expired too.
The contract, it's expired.
You were gonna get back to me, but we haven't spoken since then. So it's expired, we don't even have to counsel, uh, to counsel it.
No.
Or terminate it as it's, as it's being.
The amount approved was 45,000 dollars to do the study. And if we combine this with the comprehensive study, we're not only gonna be able to get more funding and layer it with all the things that we're doing overall, but it will be done in an efficient way with somebody I truly trust to, to make it happen.
Is that, is it, if we, are we gonna have to contract with the person that we're speaking of, and do you have any idea what that would cost?
Well, some of the, if it exceeds a certain amount, which I don't think it will, I'm writing to get into a grant for BP funds. But I think it's gonna be, with this amount of money, 45,000, and the money that we're using for, for other stuff, I guess more, more than pay for it because this is for David Perks. And, you know, he has agreed to do it. He's a sought-after urban planner, really sought-after all over the country. And he would be helping with this project because of his relationship with the economic developer that I want to bring on.
How long would it take, you know, to, the application is about-
A lot less than two years. I'm just kidding.
Well, granted, we can't go back two years and, and it should, it should have been done.
Right. Well, I, I do have to get my people here, and we can move forward very quickly.
So is this person, Perks, that you mentioned, is that someone else that we're going to hire?
No, this is not somebody that's hiring. This is to do the study. This is, I mean, he did one for Mobile, he did one for Jefferson County. He's done studies all over the country.
I would hope to save something about 45,000 because we're getting 60,000, we're spending 45,000 to get it. These two studies, which is a consolidated strategy plan and analysis of impediments to fair housing, those are the two studies that are being done. One's 30,000 dollars we're paying for, one's 15,000 dollars. We have to do these studies in order to go for this money.
He's already done these studies before, and he does the application process, so y'all don't have to do that or find passwords.
So I'm just saying, that's part, that's part of, that's part of what's involved with the grant. And yes, there were some issues with their software on HUD's side that lasted a long time, and we had a lot of excuses that we got from the federal government. And we tried, we sat on helplines for hours. So, I mean, I had an employee that literally dealt with it for three days, and it really didn't get anywhere. It was very difficult. And I didn't have anyone at the time that I could say, hey, I would be all your contacts, call somebody with HUD, let's get this going.
Right. Sherry Lee, because she does a lot with HUD, she has those direct contacts, and so those would not be roadblocks anymore.
That's great. I, I think the program would be good for the city, but, you know, it is a relatively small amount of money, but when you put it into a pile, you know, the course of five years, that's how we looked at it back when we started all this. And really, I mean, we, we started this quite a while back. We were, we were labeled as an entitlement community through HUD, and I believe 2013, they offered us this, this opportunity, and we defined that opportunity because it wasn't very much money. Instead of, the money's increased a very small amount per year. So maybe it will increase more over time, anyway.
Explain that entitlement community. What exactly would the money, what would the money be used for? Explain to the councilmen what, what the money is to be used for.
It could be used for drainage improvements, infrastructure improvements such as sidewalks and areas that might need them. We have to identify areas that are inside the city of Fairhope that are considered low-income. That's gonna be done as a part of this process that Mayor Wilson mentioned. We'll have to get into all that. It's, it's really a boots-on-the-ground kind of ordeal. I mean, it'll be a, a lot of people taking surveys and, and working with the communities that might be affected, you know, with this money. But, you know, you can do, from what I understand, you can, you can put this towards even utility improvements. I'm not sure, don't know about that. But I know infrastructure and sidewalks, things like that, roadway improvements, things in the right way, parks. So it can be used for a lot of different things. The biggest challenge, I feel, is gonna be trying to identify in the city of Fairhope where there are enough areas that can, that can qualify for the property.
You know, that's a good point right there, Jonathan, is that I don't want to give false expectations. It, it, it has to be spent within the corporate limits, correct?
That's what I understand. And there might be some other, there might be some other things that I'm not aware of. I would say that.
But that's why I do want to bring in somebody that does this all the time. I mean, they're just, this is what they do for a living.
I mean, I review a lot of site planning subdivisions. We have a lot of administrative work that I deal with a lot, but I, I haven't dealt with this program specifically until I started with SARCP. And we were gonna depend on them to get, get this process going. And it's just been, you know, it was a little bit cumbersome, to say the least.
Council members, do you have questions for Jonathan?
Jack also asked about strings attached to the money. What are, where are the-
I don't believe there are any. I mean, I, this isn't like us saying, okay, federal government, we're taking your money, and then the federal government just gets us, tell us, gets to tell us what to do with the money that we get, or in the future, tell us that we have to do certain things for any area of our community. So I don't believe there are any strings attached. I think it's a good program for us, but it's not a whole lot of money. But we do have to look at what we might, how we, how we might benefit five years down the road.
Any other questions? All right, so just if I was to take a straw poll right now to give some direction to the mayor, what, what would be your direction? Because she's gotta get this ball rolling. What would be the, what would be the direction that you'd like to give, anyone?
I mean, if there's no strings attached, I'd be in favor of-
Do you want to contact this person? Tell them to get busy on this? And where to, I mean, if there's some, something that has to be negotiated with this person to, to come in. If we need to get a contract, and it might be that we have to get on the next agenda, an authorization for the mayor to negotiate a fee schedule, you know, we have to do that every time. Would you be in favor of that?
As long as there are no strings.
Yeah, I'd be in favor of that.
So, Clark, do we, do we have to have the mayor, do we have to pass a resolution for the mayor to select the professional services? Or can we just go right into authorize the mayor to just negotiate the fee schedule? I think that's all we have to do, right?
Mayor, I'm the council president. The process that is approved by council is that you have to, and it's state law, part of it, to speak to. Is that you have to, with a professional service, you have to have the awarding and appointing authority that y'all approve the selection of the professional service provider, believe it or not, before we discuss fees. That's why you would say, we, we select-
So you can't just say it authorizes the mayor, or approves the selection of and authorizes the mayor to negotiate fee schedules?
That's what we normally bring before you, with the name of the person, and we've run them through the procedure. We've usually sent them the RFQ, they've responded, evaluated, the mayor makes her choice, and then we bring that to you if it's over certain limits. If it's over 15,000 dollars in fees, we bring it to you guys to approve the selection and the fee schedule negotiation. If it's under 15, the mayor can sign it and, and move forward and even sign a contract toward that selection. Over 15, it's gotta go to you guys.
I'm still not sure I got the answer on the selection. Can we put the selection on the next meeting?
If we bring a name before you, yes, to select. We have to, we have to select the person or company.
Premise a name, premise a name, you know.
Yeah. I already have it. David Perks.
So, yeah, so what would the process would be, would be to just approve that selection, and then, like you said, you go select it, you need to make a few. All right, anything else, council members, before we adjourn? And moving to our regular city council meeting? Go take seats, or change seats? All right, I'll call this meeting adjourned, and let's take a five-minute break before we start our council meeting.